I have to say the thoroughness is impressive. I don't want to peg it against Bigfoot, but.
They're very Josephine.
He's doing a really good job. So we'll do the minutes first, then we have the the big carrot, I guess is what we call. That was supposed to be Jeff and Mr. Ventura, so Mr. Finley.
And there's that motion to amend that he had sent out. It'll need to be made to add the date.
Do you have that?
Did we have it in the packet?
Well, no, it came.
It came, yeah.
Oh, you're right.
We didn't get the
I didn't print that out on the board.
I believe it was September
Eighteenth.
Eight.
Is that ready?
Okay.
Now, we had discussion on this last time. It was two parcels, it's basically with the industrial royalty groups. Do we have any problem with it going to? Well, Mr. Garvis was not here. Do you have questions?
I wasn't here.
I was here.
Were you stuck in Hawaii? If you're gonna be stuck somewhere from work, it better have been somewhere nice.
No, I was down in Tennessee.
That's a nice
Tennessee.
Axville? Axville?
Nashville.
You were singing at the club that night.
Oh, yeah.
Weren't you up in there? I've been there and you're eating pride pickles, weren't you? That's a big place. All right, so do you have any questions? I'm sorry.
And we're just, are we just gonna do second read of this? Or should we just? Should we do third?
We go to second and third. Everything, remember, everything was only a first. Because there weren't enough of us to go beyond. According to our according to our legal advisor, we could only do first.
Gotcha.
And we trust him. So we, Mr. Garvis, if you don't have any questions, we'll do.
Did you actually, I didn't open that attachment, apparently. Did you have the actual language of the motion? Or do you just want me to make a motion to change the whereas clause?
Just a motion to add the September 8th date to the blank whereas.
Tell them exactly what to say.
Oh, I can say it.
Just literally amending a day and date. A motion to amend to add the September 8th date in the blank. In the whereas.
Got it. I can do that.
Okay, so that will be Mr. Garvis, Mr. Finley. Then we move on to number 46. This is the blanket purchases or change the dollar amount to 50,000. Again, this was Garvis and Benny, so I guess it'll be Garvis and Jam. It should be Garvis and Garvis, but we're not gonna do that. Any questions on this one?
That's the same amount as it's been in the past. Are we increasing it?
So this is acknowledging that the city's followed as a policy, the Ohio Vice Code. That's really all this does, except it does set the threshold for the maximum for blanket purchase orders. Is really the only substantive thing this does.
So we can go to everyone's okay, two, three, exit. Okay. And the next one up that you all got information, more information on is Sagamore Hills. There were some pages that came out that talked about the dollar amounts. There's actually a big article in the paper today about this.
And the article kind of said that we need to pass it this week?
Yes. So the date, it expires, and it does have to. But Sagamore is very enthusiastic about staying as part of us and very excited that we would continue this. And it goes now till 36.
Thirty-six.
Two and through.
Imagine 2036. That's just like, it's hard to fathom that it's out that far. Do I have any questions? Did everybody get a chance to see the dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So that came.
So those are all locked in until 2036 as written?
Yep. Sagamore has already passed a resolution. We actually had the numbers worked out. Mayor can attest to it, the chief can attest to it some time ago. And Sagamore did pass them, so once you all, or if you all approve it tonight, then it's
Y'all.
It's a done deal.
All passing. And there was only one change, and that was in the 2021 because there was the typo. That was it. So all the dollars that you see in this chart are confirmed by Sagamore. We're just saying, yes, we agree. We're gonna do this. And I'd like to thank former Chief Black and our current chief for working very diligently with these folks. They're very excited to use us. I'm on the cemetery court, and so I talk to a couple of their people all the time, and they're very excited to stay a part of this. They think we provide awesome service.
We do.
Your head won't go off the door. That's okay. So if no one's in objection, we'll do two, three, and adopt. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
And it's nice to have partners. At some point, we're gonna become our dog in Hills.
Shooting four years ago.
Four different people. I've never understood why they separated into little communities, but we had the best volunteer fire police, fire department when I moved here as a kid. Ordinance 48. Well, Jessica, do you wanna do this again? So this will be.
Jeff is gonna be part of every single one of them.
No, he's got 47. His 47 didn't have to change. So we changed it to Jeff before, then 48. So they, you know, I had heard, no, it's Benny.
Right, it's Benny, so.
So she did. Because Jeff's got 47 automatically. So we'll give Dave 48. Give me shovel. That's part of this. First or second.
No, I get to drive the truck. You have to hop out and shovel.
I have the snow blower. It's not even five years old.
You are, you're right, Jessica.
This is probably one of the better, one of the good things that we do.
We do a lot of good things, Jan.
Yeah, but I know this is one of them, like, doesn't
This is an excellent thing.
A lot of recognition.
A lot of people appreciate it.
That we do that.
You ever saw pink bananas?
Okay. So do you have a question?
I, but it was answered.
Two and three on that?
Yep, two, three, and adopt. If there's a less, now you can always change your mind and go out there. I'm just saying, we're gonna go for two, three, and adopt.
I was just asking before we moved on.
I mean, that doesn't mean you said yes in here, because we don't vote. Okay. Then we go into the gutter cleaning. This is me and Jeff. Another thing we started, it actually was a request from, believe it or not, Mr. Lopar, that brought this to us several years ago. It, it worked. For those of you who clean your own gutters, yeah, you know how scary it is to go up there and do it.
Not me.
So Gregory's open for love climbing up and hanging upside down and not me. So the cost on this. Do we have a full cost, Jeff?
It didn't increase from last year, so it's the same cost as we did last year. I don't want the exact number.
Okay. Do you know the cost, sir? No.
Oh, now you're muted.
Shake your head, because you're muted.
Ooh, sorry.
There you are. Do you know the cost?
I have no.
Does this seem like we're talking to a ghost?
Seventy dollars per home, non-taxable.
How much?
Seventy dollars per home, non-taxable, roughly 40 houses.
Okay.
Not to exceed 2,800 dollars.
Thank you. Valley View, property maintenance. Not to exceed what?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight hundred. Okay. Anybody have an issue with this one? Otherwise, we'll do two, three, adopt. Okay, we got one more of these. This is Jessica, and I guess it's me. Have I got my second one there? No. Yeah, I'll take this one. We'll try and equal it out. This is for the garbage pickup. Questions on this one?
No.
And then on this one, we're still okay with the two, three, and adopt. Okay. Just like the Army. So that will take care of number 50. Fifty-one, Mr. Finley and Mr. Garvis. This is the Golden Link Boulevard and Reviving Project. Do we build the companies that are in there? Do we build Golden Link?
This would be, this is the responsibility of the township and us to pave that. So no, we do not build them for the paving of that roadway.
So for the entrance itself and what goes all the way to the pools, we take care of all that?
Correct.
Public roadway, yeah.
We have an assessment.
Kind of, kind of know it's inside of shopping center. That's why I asked.
It's a dedicated road.
The application split based on Mr. July's calculations, I think it was 57.5 and 42.5?
That's correct, yeah.
Township and city, respectively?
That is, that is the correct percentage, yeah. So the piece of legislation here is for, to authorize us to apply to OPWC for the outside funding help to pave the road. It is a public road, to your point. So this would be for paving the road from the main entrance all the way to the cul-de-sac where the great escape is, the entire road, except for the brand-new part that we just built last year naturally, so.
And this is 75% us? Because most of that comes from Macedonia. If I look at this, this is mostly us. Oh, okay. That's almost half.
Numbers were. Yeah, so 42.5% of the road falls in Macedonia. 57.5% falls in Northfield Center Township.
And Northfield Center has agreed?
They passed their similar piece of legislation on Tuesday night.
Okay. How much funding do we get from OPWC?
So the strategy that we employ, it would be 50% of the funding needed, we would ask for in the form of a grant. So in this particular case, this total project cost estimate is $289,000 to pave the entire road. So we would be requesting from OPWC 50% of that, 144 grand, in the form of a grant. We also typically, and we'll do the same in this case, send in a second application, also for the same project, for Golden Link. The second application, we ask for 90% of the funding, but that's in the form of a loan. Terms of the loan are 20 years at 0%. I always view that as kind of the second chance application, the second chance pool for us. If we get the grant, fantastic. OPWC doesn't even score the loan. If we do not get awarded the grant, then they'll score the loan, give us a second chance for funding assistance.
Would this be done this year?
So I was just gonna get to that as well, Ms. Tully. So the typical schedule is applications are due in September, in this case, September 28th. Typically, you find out the results of the applications in February. And if your application is successful and you receive the money, you receive the money beginning on July 1st, in this case of 2022. So if the application is successful, we would pave the road in the second half of 2022.
Who approves the bid, since it's in the JED? Are you the engineer for the JED?
We will be the lead, yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm the engineer. And since this is a joint project with Northfield Center Township, one community has to be designated as the lead. That will be us. So if this application is successful and the project goes forward, it would be handled just the same as paving any other road in the city. All the same usual legislation, you guys would see public bid process, all as normal.
Somewhat similar to the different funding mechanism, obviously, but the special assessment we did for the Right-In, Right-Out access drive.
Oh, that's right.
The city took the lead on that.
Correct.
But that was different, because it is in Macedonia. This goes across, this goes across the line.
Yes, it does.
Okay, excellent.
Any other questions?
Third read, please?
Due to the deadline.
We need this.
Yeah, deadline is September 28th for the
Well, if we didn't, we could do it at the next meeting, but if you don't have any questions, we can do it tonight. Because we have another meeting before, but. Okay. Next up is funding for Valley View. And that is from, is that from Twinsburg Road South?
Correct. This will be, everything we just talked about is, applies to this piece of legislation as well for Valley View Road, except this is for paving Valley View Road from Twinsburg Road south to our southern city limits or the Hudson city limit. And the only other difference is that this is a Macedonia-only project where there's no other community involved.
So we wouldn't know if we get any money until July?
No, we'll know, we'll find out the results in about February.
Right.
And then the money becomes available on July 1st.
The only reason I would question doing this then in the third quarter is if those houses start getting built. I don't know if you've noticed, there's a bump in the road that's been caused by the trees that they took out. Somebody dropped something.
I was waiting on work today, and we sent the building commissioner out to
We might wanna wait to pay that until that housing development's through.
I would say that, that is possible. If this application is successful, and then we actually move forward with the project, we likely would coordinate it with
Is that Mr. Colby?
The installation of the S. Colby's and the developer there.
Because sincerely, there's been some ugly stuff that wired that at the beginning, besides taking all the trees down.
And I will say that the money is available for a year. In other words, if the application is successful, we would get the money on July 1st, but we have, of '22, but we have to start the project before July 1st of 2023. So we can't wait forever, so.
Yeah, no, but
That's, that's a good timing with the houses.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll strategize if we get to that point. We gotta get the money.
I thought you were gonna say it was the calendar year. That's actually a lot better.
Yeah, it's fiscal year.
Nice, good point, Jan.
Well, and he's delayed the beginning of it. He took the house down, he took the back house down. Now he's taking all the trees down, but he hasn't really gone into the forward motion of selling the properties or leveling everything out, so. My fear is, we made this beautiful road, and now there are still two or three properties across the street for sale. There has been zero interest in them. They built one house. I don't foresee them happening.
I've heard nothing.
Maybe a nicer road would help them sell.
Ooh, good point.
I haven't seen anything happen with them, but, okay. If there's no issue with that, why don't we do one, two, three? Because again, we wanna get approval. And then maybe you can talk to Mr. Colby, so we'll find out, does it happen in time?
Yeah, I have heard a recent DUF date that we can touch base with our building commissioner. He's, he's in touch with all the developer.
I know he's talked about, they've all talked about Lombard.
Right.
But I've also heard
It's coming down. It's not, but it's not going down very far. And nobody knows, nobody can predict what it's gonna
There's houses out in Garrettsville that are being built, so.
Do you have any insight there?
Oh, well, wood's bad, insulation's bad, construction grade sand is bad. It's so concrete's it's traumatic, too.
Asking you to build stuff out of glass now?
Yeah.
Some plastic cardboard?
Yeah, I mean, glass has even got a huge lead time right now, too. So it's, it's not good.
I guess, should I build my own shit? I need a new one. Just refurbish it, I guess.
Yeah.
All right. Next one up is the Macedonia. The Golden Link sign for, I gather that's on eight.
We're writing it right out.
Where it comes in and goes around. And that'll be in front of the sign that's there now, that the property's for sale.
It's offset back. We put a lot of time, as Joe can probably explain, but that sign is offset, so it's not interrupting the businesses or blocking anything or anything.
North side or south side of that entrance?
The new monument sign will be on the north side of the new Right-In, Right-Out access.
Which way it really faces?
So it's a two-sided sign, so it faces north and south.
Conradicular.
I just don't want anybody deciding I can make a left turn from the other side of the eight.
No one's done that yet.
That sounds familiar.
Wait till it snows, though, and they don't see that ditch.
What's interesting is most people don't even know that it's actually better to turn on eight and go in there than going down and cut through Target, because you got all these people still. I know, but it's an absolutely wonderful way to get in. So this would be on the north side, and it's like this?
Uh, no, it's a two-sided sign, so it'll be viewed from the north and the south.
Will it look similar to the one that's at the other?
Similar, but much smaller. One of the main entrances, a giant, as you guys are aware, I'm sure.
Questions on this one? Can you tell us more about timeline?
Yeah, so I guess the timeline would be to construct the sign this fall, so as such, we would ask for a third read tonight, so that the architect can give the go-ahead to the contractor who has signorama.
Questions?
How long is the schedule to build it?
Once we award this, we'll have our architect ask signorama for a more detailed construction schedule, which we'll share with everybody.
But your anticipations to have it done?
This year, correct.
Well, I was gonna say before the snow flies, but after the temperature drop today, everybody's said to me, is it coming? No, well, next week it'll be 80 again. It's Ohio.
And no need It will be 80 next week.
Your intent is to have it done before the
Before the snow falls. There you go.
And no need to do any closure of the Right-In?
No. No. I mean, they may close the lane for a few minutes as needed, but the Right-In, Right-Out will remain open.
Just gonna be a guy in
We just built it, we don't wanna shut it down.
We don't wanna shut it down.
No.
Well, nobody uses the big out, other than
I use it.
Other than the people in this room.
It's a great way to get to.
It is.
We fought long and hard for it. We're gonna do that.
Okay. If there's no questions or concerns, Mr. Garvis, that's you and me, I have one, two, three, and adopt. This means the way we're going, we'll have nothing to carry over, so our work session could be five minutes next time, John. John had to do a meeting downstairs early, so. Okay, next up, 54. This is Ms. Brand with Mr. Finley. This is the infamous Was To Club, Buzzwind Mill. Now it's Biz, Biz Crew.
It's still windmill. That's just their corporate.
Exhibit A, windmill.
Oh. This place was crowded the other day. It had a bunch of high school kids on it, not Nardones, but they had a lot. So it was nice to see the business. You wanna put this one in a nutshell?
So we've been negotiating this for quite some time and gone back and forth, Mark and I, as with the other ones, but we feel this is a fair agreement for the property and have come to terms. Basically, the first option term is April 1st, 17th. It expires March 31st, a thousand a month, plus some other things that are added into there. Second term is April 1st, '22 to '27, at a thousand a month. And the third option term is '27 to '32, at 1,500 a month. Do you wanna touch on the other aspects of that?
So, yeah, there's a, there's a provision in there that provides for a payment in lieu of taxes. The property is currently exempt through a, well, some of you may recall that there was a large battle with the tax commissioner's office, and we were on the hook for approximately $500,000. We had to take it through litigation, and after a couple of years, we ended up with the tax exempt status. But we do have those payments in lieu of taxes coming in still, in case there's ever a change in the status or the Ohio Supreme Court decides to change its position on tax exemptions for municipalities when there's concession leases like this on the property. But right now, that's good. There's also a profit-sharing provision where the city gets a small percentage of the operations that are ongoing on the property. I believe the last of the five-year terms is, is it 2032 or 2036? I think 2037.
2032.
32 through
27 or 32.
It goes from 27 to
And they've shown a lot of growth, too, so they're gonna be adding things into their part of the negotiations when they were gonna add a couple of driving stalls, and they're, they're doing well, and we'll re-benefit from that as well, because they're on our property.
Well, the driving stalls are always busy, so if they extend further down, this, this side's always on, no matter when you go by. The other thing is, I've gotten comments from folks who actually come out of town to go into their store, because they have some of the best golf equipment and golf facilities, and so they go in there and they shop.
We're in the top two of fittings for clubs in the
Wow. And now that Gregory works for Eaton's part that does golf groups, I said, hmm. If, for reason, for those of you who don't know, for reason, any reason, this would go belly out, that land comes back to the city as park. We're only allowed per of the will to do 30 acres, and that's what that is. So, but it's doing very well, and I think people didn't think it was gonna go, but it did. Have you ever played it?
I don't know.
Gone to the driving range with coworkers.
Try the course. It's not as easy as people think. As Patrick says, wow, I go, you make a haul, I wanna give you money. Not one, so. So if there's no questions, any more questions? Otherwise, are we okay to do one, two, three, adopt?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have the dispatch services for the township. This was supposed to be me with Mr. Ventura. I guess we'll go all the way around to Ms. Brand. We'd like to speak to this one.
So in the spirit of the partnerships that we've established with Fire, want to extend this out to be a 15-year term as well. We've come to an agreement with that, and we feel this is best for both communities.
Last year, you previously approved a 10-year, so this basically extends it out an additional time.
Do we need to amend the dates, because they were blank in this, in section one? The contract will begin and terminate. And it can't be, the 20 is gone.
Yeah, you can make a motion to amend to be consistent with Exhibit A, and then Mr. Hoover can fill that in.
To make it consistent with what?
Exhibit A.
What if we didn't do that? What happens to the blanks? They stay blank.
We probably just add it. It's already
Mark makes it go away.
It's already, it's already in Exhibit A that you've approved, so.
I know, but it's like
No, they, they would just stay blank until somebody
I can see all these people calling, Mr. Hoover, going, well, the dates are blank. How can you do this?
Yeah, they would stay blank until somebody noticed.
Okay. Then we go to, turn your page back down. To 56. This was supposed to be Mr. Ventura's. How about we make this Jeff with the, make Jeff the first? And just move you out. How's that? So Jeff, you own this one, Dave will be the second. We'd like to explain these.
It's John's
I think Max Hedrum was gonna explain the whole.
More for work. So this is a they've started business, they've made great improvements to the building, and we're happy to have them. And we'll capture any county property tax that'll come to us to make infrastructure improvements along the streets listed in the ordinance. So the pools are being kept cool in this tip and in the following tip, unlike the big carrots.
What's NANO stand for?
National Technology.
It's a, it's a measurement. It's a measurement, like milla or mega or giga.
It'd be real big.
Sounds like nan, tuller, huh?
Yes.
I think I vowed, if anyone is interested, to go check that out. If you guys have time, I strongly encourage you to go and see that operation. It's pretty impressive, especially if you're in the tech stuff.
Do you have some free lenses?
Those are very expensive. I wouldn't even touch them when I handled them at that time.
No. I didn't mention, please leave this on first reading along with the next one, so we can send out proper notification.
Right. Yeah, this is the first reading, because anytime we do a TIF, school board has to. I don't think we've ever come to one where they haven't agreed, but you never know in this day and age. So how little be Jeff and Dave tonight, and then you guys all, we're not gonna change names unless you decide to get stuck in Hawaii.
Doesn't need a second, since this is first.
Yes, so we won't need a second. So we'll leave you as... We'll leave it as Dave for the second, the next go on, Mr. Hoover. And last but not least, is Mr. Finley with Ms. Brandt. This again is... I think everybody knows about Ohio State Waterproof. If you've been by there, there's a old bird, a couple old houses there. There was one around the corner and one down the street. They're gone, because the one lady's come on top, so it was not...
The one behind it is still there.
I saw that. I was surprised they didn't buy that one.
It's a life tendency, essentially, for the husband and wife that are currently still owners of that property.
Yeah, because the one just down from us gone, the one around the corner's gone. So I was surprised when I drove by there. It was a model. This company is also hiring, if you need a job. In all seriousness, good company to work for. Questions? This is another first reading only?
Yes.
Again, has to go to the school board. So we will have two to carry over. Sorry, guys. Then I have a motion to make. There was a donation that's been made that's anonymous. They'd like to remain anonymous for $5,000 for the police department for certain law enforcement purposes, very high level, but yes, it's... We got some money. So I'll be the motion. Mr. Finley will be the second.
Cool.
All right. Anything else that anybody has any motions for that we're aware of?
Not that much, but we need to talk about the finance committee dates.
Yes. I thought we had set them.
We did, but Dave mentioned that he cannot make the seventh of October, so we need to look and see what...
You got another date to sing?
Yeah, well, it's...
No, you don't have to explain. Everybody has...
I think the Republican Republic are an actual vacation, so...
So he's gonna be gone that whole week of the seventh, so we can't do that week?
Yeah. So you're gonna be gone that whole week. Um, two, three, nine. And the fourteenth is council.
Right.
We need to get it done sooner than later.
On the fifteenth, I'm gone.
Do we want to look at the 21st, or is that pushing too far?
I'm gonna... I'm gone.
You're on on the 21st of October, Jan?
From the fifteenth to the, well, I think the 22nd. I'm watching kids.
Well, what about a Tuesday?
Would you like to all come to South Carolina, you're more welcome? The kids will be gone.
We have to watch the kids.
Or the Meredith and her husband won't be gone. It'll just be Greg and I and the three kids, and we can do it at the beach.
Yeah, we have to bring the directors with us.
Well, Jan already hung up, but I'm sure he would agree to meet us down there for the budget.
We know Joe has a beach house, and we can see it.
Hey, I'm in South Carolina right now.
Yeah.
I'm Joe.
You're always...
I watched your video.
Coming from the...
That's right.
Well, a shack. You're just hanging around in a shack on the beach. Yeah.
You're gonna...
I just use it to hide the unfinished base of the wall behind me.
Is there a way that we could do it like the 13th? Are you back?
Yeah, I'm back, but you can't do Wednesday.
Are you available on the 13th of October if we lose the first budget meeting?
America can't do Wednesday.
I mean, you're welcome, obviously.
Yeah, I am, yeah.
Are you gonna pay for the 12th or the 13th?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd prefer to be here, but...
All right, 12th or the 13th, you guys pick. We can't do Monday. It's Columbus Day.
The 12th.
Okay. Same time, same station.
Six o'clock?
I think that's what we had set, was six, right, John?
First budget.
Yeah.
I just got boobs. Sure, precedent itself.
I will mention that change tonight.
Okay, that's a good thing. Yeah, and then mention the second one, that when people notice the first one or second one, is they're open to the public.
Right.
Can't speak, but they're always welcome to come and listen. There have been times we've actually did it at the rec center when we had lovelies on, so... Right.
And all update. And he originally agreed to the first two dates, but I'm sure he'll probably...
I think he's a captive audience, as is my brother.
You're not here on the 7th.
Correct.
Do we still need this special meeting on the 7th, October 7th, for the second reading of the TIF?
There's not.
No, you just need to have the TIF's pass prior to a subsequent appraisal done on the property, so you've got some time.
Okay. Because we had to... All right, so I can delete the 7th.
Yeah, 30th and the...
Take the 7th off, put the 12th on, and then the other one is still standing for...
The 30th at six.
Is that October?
No, September 30th.
That's what I was gonna say.
And then 10, 12, October 12.
How are we breaking up the... Are we gonna do Capital One and then General, yeah?
That's between the chair and they have to figure out how to go.
I think debt and capital, the first meeting counts, and then we can go over operating budget the second, and then leave a third date for any cleanup.
And we can do that. In the past, we've done... We've done a short meeting before a council meeting, so if we do need to, we could do it like before the meeting on the 28th, if we need a cleanup.
The 30th, we're doing at six, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I fly back, I take them there by noon.
Both of them on the 6th. I'm sorry, both of them at 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
That's when I have to go to the debt test.
And I'm sure Jerma, who's gonna fill in for Benny. Yeah, gotcha.
Are we planning on 10/21 for first read?
I mean, I can motion.
You take... I'll tell you, I can make the motion, I'll say...
No, we're not here on the 20th. We're not here.
The 28th. I would like to just be able to say...
Be the 28th.
28th, 28th, I'm sorry.
Jan, are you gonna do the adjournment thing?
I'm doing it.
The two of us. He's gonna lead it, I'm gonna sack it up.
Can I add a couple things before we go out? Very important. I have two proclamations I'm gonna do after the Pledge of Allegiance. One is for September 11th, 20-year, obviously. The other one is for National Preparedness Month. And the most important thing, Norfield Center contract for FIRE. I am so close, and we should have that wrapped up, I would hope, by Monday, latest Tuesday, because the contract expires Tuesday at full of business.
You're doing proclamation after the pledge, right? Those are the first things.
Yes.
So if you get the FIRE wrapped up, do we have to vote on?
We... Mark and I talked about that earlier. We can do that in the next meeting, so...
You can ratify it at the next meeting. Instead of authorizing it or signing a contract, you don't authorize it.
They will have two weeks of FIRE coverage?
Yes. And last thing, can we excuse Mr. Varis, or would you guys like him to join us in the meeting?
I would like him to be live, isn't he? Can't he come in like you do on Easter?
He's gonna watch it anyway.
Go back to vacation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you, John.
Great training.
Thank you.
I'll be there in three hours.
Okay. Tom Brown. Tom Brown.
Where's... Where are you at? Where's he at?
Hello, and welcome to the September 9th council meeting. It is 7:32 PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Ms. Ventura?
Now I ask Mr. O'Brien from American Legion Post 801 Chaplain to lead us in prayer and follow, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
With bowheads, let us pray. Almighty God, we ask for your blessing as we gather this evening for our city council meeting. We ask for your guiding hands to aid our council members, so they may work together. Give our council members the transparency demanded by their constituency, and in return, allow the members of the community to show respect for our mayor and council members. Almighty God, we ask that you shower our blessing on all our city employees who work tirelessly to ensure that the work of this council and mayor is completed in a professional manner. And lastly, oh God almighty, we ask that you embrace those members of our community who suffer from mental or physical illness, as all as those who suffer from potential hardship. Amen. And now with hand over heart, please face the flag and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation after God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Next up, I have two proclamations. The first one is for National Preparedness Month, whereas National Preparedness Month creates an opportunity for residents to prepare their homes, businesses, schools, and communities for disaster, and whereas investing in preparedness can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities, our state, and our nation. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, through its Ready campaign, and other federal, state, local, private, and volunteer agencies are working to educate the public about preparing for and responding to emergencies. And whereas we are encouraged to prioritize health, safety, and preparedness, which coincide with this year's National Preparedness Month theme, Prepare to Protect. And whereas during September, we are encouraged to visit ready.ohio.gov and FEMA's ready.gov for information on creating an emergency plan, building disaster supply kits, volunteering in communities, and preparing for disasters. And whereas the third week of National Preparedness Month focuses on volunteerism, and we are encouraged to visit www.ema.ohio.gov/sir. Check. One, two, one, two. To learn about opportunities with the Ohio Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, and now therefore I, Nicholas Molnar, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, do hereby encourage all citizens and businesses to develop or update their emergency preparedness plans and work together toward creating a more prepared society as we recognize throughout the month of September 2021. That was a tongue twister. Oof, lots of preparednesses in there. Next up is the 20th anniversary of September 11th, 2001. Whereas we will never forget September 11th, 2021, the tragic day when Al Qaeda launched a series of coordinated terrorist attacks on the United States, killing almost 3,000 people. And whereas in the aftermath of devastation at the World Trade Center in New York, the Pentagon, in Arlington, Virginia, and in a field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, the spirit of America arose. And whereas Ohioans and the rest of the nation united in support of survivors and their families. And whereas September 11th was made a national day of mourning called Patriot Day. And whereas on Patriot Day, we honor the brave, devoted members of our law enforcement, public safety, and intelligence communities who worked diligently and tirelessly to protect us. And whereas we also honor the heroic men and women of our armed forces, including many Ohioans who have answered the call to defend America at both home and abroad. We also remember those lost in the attacks, including many ties in Ohio, by showing compassion for others and giving ourselves, giving of ourselves. And whereas after two decades, September 11th continues to be a somber day of remembrance and reflection, when Ohioans come together and honor the memory and sacrifices everyone lost that day and then the years after, in defense of freedom. Now therefore I, Nicholas Molnar, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, on this ninth day of September, do hereby recognize the 20th anniversary of September 11th, 2001. Okay, next up is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer that we approve the minutes that were submitted for August 12, 2021 for the regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public comments, we have none this evening. Do we have any correspondence from the clerk?
No correspondence.
All right, we'll move into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number 39.
Mayor, I move to offer ordinance 39, 2021, for its third reading.
Second.
An emergency ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be of public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcels, requiring the owners of the improvements on such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, and establishing a big carrot municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.40, 5709.42, and 5709.43.
So essentially, this is the TIF tax incremental financing for the Bedford Anodizing Site, and this is the third reading of it, which will move us forward to take those dollars that be diverted from the county to improvements within that area. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I need to make a motion to modify the whereas clause where there is a blank to include the date September 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I would like to move to adopt ordinance 39, 2021, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 39 carries. Resolution number 46.
Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 46, 2021, for its second and third reading by Title I.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution acknowledging a City of Macedonia policy as the blanket purchase orders.
Mr. Gaddetti?
So this is a piece of legislation that recognizes the city's practice of adhering to the blanket purchase order and super blanket purchase order policy set forth in the Revised Code. And this also sets a maximum blanket purchase order limit at...
$50,000.
Thank you.
What was it previously?
You had not previously set a maximum purchase order amount.
But the Ohio Revised Code did, or not?
The Ohio Revised Code provides it's up to the political subdivision to set the amounts.
But previously, we had been following those guidelines of $50,000. Now we're just legislating.
Right, and yeah, and obviously, the $50,000 amount is up to the competitive bidding threshold, which obviously makes sense, which is a separate law.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's consistent. Yep.
Thank you. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution 46, 2021, and post the same according to law.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 46 carries. Ordinance number 47.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 47, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by Title I, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the township of Sagamore Hills, Ohio, to provide emergency fire and medical services to the township.
So I'd be lying to you if I said that we didn't spend a ton of time between Mr. Goodetti, myself, and Chief Ripley on the contract for this. I'm happy to say that they had passed it, I believe, on Tuesday. Is that correct?
Last Thursday, I believe.
Or last Thursday, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the other one. We're doing a lot of contracts at this point, so I'm losing track. But it's a 15-year agreement with them to provide our fire service, fire EMS service to them. I'm very proud to continue that partnership. I'm happy that they passed it, and I'm very proud that they pass theirs, and we're going to be a part of this thing for a lot longer, so. Any other discussion or questions, or anything my counterparts would like to add, because that was not an easy task?
I would just add that without the chief and the excellent services that the fire department provides, the negotiations probably would have taken a lot longer, so kudos to them for the job they do.
Absolutely. They do a phenomenal job.
I want to explain very quickly to the residents how long the contract is, because it is...
I believe I said it, but it's 15 years. It's a 15-year contract. This takes us for quite some time, but the first five obviously was a test. The first five years went very well. That was prior to me, when that was negotiated. This moves us into three times that, because again, a testament to the job that our fire department does, and they obviously are very happy with that service.
Thank you to Chief Swack and to Chief Ripley, of course, for coming up with the idea. And you think the work that is done is still based, and they're very excited to keep us as partners. The 15 years doesn't sound enough, but when you say it's 2036, it sounds like it's way out in the future.
Well, I will say that it's a testament to the staff, the men and women of the fire department, and the way they carry themselves in public and continue to, the same way I was taught, and it makes me feel very proud that we've put that impression to them that we are what we are, we're the same over there as we are here, and carrying compassionate people who want to do the right thing every time, so.
And having lived and still living through a pandemic, again, kind of speaks to the job they're doing. If you have the unfortunate but fortunate pleasure of meeting them at that point, they're going to do everything they can to keep you safe, and that's what their goal is at all times, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 47, 2021, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 47 carries. Ordinance number 48.
I propose ordinance number 48, 2021 for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing for a senior snow removal program for the 2021, 2022 winter season.
Basically, what we do every year for our seniors, it's taking care of the snow removal in their driveways if they're under the threshold. A lot of that information will be available on our website if you want to sign up for it, or you can even call our service department to inquire more about that, so.
What threshold?
The threshold for the, I believe it's called the poverty level, is that correct?
Yeah, it's the low threshold for the Akron metropolitan area, which I think is the lower $20,000 annual income for, it's based on occupancy, whether you have one...
It's an income threshold. It just wasn't clear the way they said it.
It's posted on our website, and it's also based off of specific county or the state.
It's the state, correct? Mark?
It's the state for the Akron areas. It's the state level for the area.
So we didn't come up with a number by ourselves. It's what's used generically across the board.
And just to be clear, that'll be the same threshold that is utilized for the next several pieces of legislation, too.
48, 49 years. Services that we provide specifically for seniors have to pick those. So if you're going to apply for one, you can also apply for all, I think that would be that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance number 48, 2021 and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 48 carries. Ordinance 49.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 49, 2021 for its second, third, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Valley View Property Maintenance LLC for a senior gutter cleaning program for the fall 2021 season.
This is the senior gutter cleaning program. In the fall, we send them out to clean out their gutters so that the water flows to them properly, same thing as we spoke about in ordinance number 48. Any other discussion? What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 49, 2021, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 49 carries. Ordinance number 50.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 50, 2021 for its second and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing for and authorizing a refuse collection subsidy for senior citizens and making appropriation for that subsidy.
Trash pickup for seniors under that same financial threshold. Thank you for correcting me on that, I appreciate that. And what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 50, 2021 according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 50 carries. Resolution number 51.
I move to offer resolution number 51, 2021 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to take such steps necessary to apply for funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission, District Eight Public Works Committee, Program Year 36, for the Golden Link Boulevard repaving project.
Director Gelati?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This piece of legislation is to authorize the city to apply to Ohio Public Works Commission for outside funding for the resurfacing of Golden Link Boulevard. Applications are due on September 28. We expect to find out the results of the application in February, and if successful, the resurfacing of Golden Link Boulevard would be scheduled for the second half of 2022.
And can you also get the percentages just for the...
Oh, yes, and this is a joint project with Northfield Center Township. As you know, Golden Link Boulevard falls across the city limits. Forty-two and a half percent of the road and of the project falls within the city of Macedonia. Fifty-seven and a half percent falls within Northfield Center Township.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number 51, 2021 and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order, sorry, resolution 51 carries. Resolution 52.
I'd like to offer resolution number 52, 2021 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to take such steps necessary to apply for funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission, District Eight Public Works Committee, Program Year 36, for the Valley View Road resurfacing project.
You're on the hot streak, Director Gelati.
Okay, so this is very similar to the previous piece of legislation, except that this is for the resurfacing of Valley View Road. That would be the stretch of Valley View Road from Twinsburg Road heading south to our south corporation limit or our city limits with Hudson. And this would be a only Macedonia project. It's not a joint venture with a neighboring community.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law resolution number 52, 2021, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 52 carries. Ordinance 53.
I'd like to offer ordinance 53, 2021 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sinorama Cleveland for the Macedonia-Golden Link Boulevard signage project.
Well, one more.
Three in a row. So as discussed in the work session, this is to award the contract for the construction of the monument sign to Sinorama. This is the monument sign for the newly constructed Golden Link Boulevard access road, which was built last year. So this is the entrance sign with the names of all the businesses in that shopping center, scheduled for construction this fall.
And just a reminder to council, this is really the second portion of the special assessment project, which the city has not completed that process. Once the signs completed and the final amounts are determined, notice will go out to the property owners, and then the city can proceed with the final assessment ordinance. So that legislation will be coming before you once the project's completed.
So essentially, it's funded by the businesses that are over there, not the city.
Correct.
Thank you. And what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance 53, 2021 and pass the same, post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 53 carries. Resolution 54.
I move to present resolution number 54, 2021 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an addendum to the concession lease agreement with BizPro Golf LTD.
So this is extending the agreement with Windmill Lake. I know that it says BizPro Golf Limited, but this is essentially Windmill Lake. Through much negotiation, and I'll allow Director Goodetti to add into this, we've come to an agreement to extend the life of that agreement and keep them there. They are a very successful entity, and as we talked about in the work session, they did let me know that they are in the top two fitters in the country for golf clubs. So that's a fairly impressive thing to have on your resume when you're operating within our city limits and on our parkland, so nice to see that. Anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post resolution number 54, 2021 according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 54 carries. Ordinance number 55.
I'd like to offer resolution number 55, 2021 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance ratifying, an ordinance ratifying an agreement to provide dispatch services to Sagamore Hills Township.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Section 1 where the dates are blanked to state that these dates will be considered as what is posted in the municipal date.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Essentially, this is adding five more years to the agreement for Sagamore Hills for us to do their dispatch services, which puts that at a 15-year, which equalizes the contract that was approved a little bit earlier for our fire and EMS service. So again, strengthening that relationship and keeping that partnership alive, and I think it's great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 55, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 55 carries. Ordinance 56.
I'd like to offer ordinance 56, 2021 for its first reading.
Second.
An ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be of public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcels, requiring the owners of the improvements on such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a peak nano municipal improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709.40, 5709.42, and 5709.43, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 57.
I move to offer ordinance 57, 2021 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real properties to be of public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcels, requiring the owners of the improvements on such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an Ohio State Waterproofing Municipal Public Improvement Tax Increment Equivalent Fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709.40, 5709.42, and 5709.43, and declaring an emergency.
Any other motions or legislative actions?
I'd like to make a motion to accept an anonymous donation for the amount $5,000 to be utilized by the Macedonia Police Department for certain law enforcement purposes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just to be clear, finance will deposit that into the Safety Services Fund 280-000-4512 and create a $5,000 purchase order to the company we leased our license plate cameras from, which was the desire of the donator, who, as it said, is anonymous. Okay, we'll move into the mayor's report. A few things to talk about, dispatchers. We've been having some troubles getting dispatchers in. As with most things in the world right now, getting staffing to help has been very difficult, and getting folks into that position takes about six months, according to the chief, to get them up to speed to where they can function on their own. And I got to give those ladies that we have here a lot of respect, ladies and I believe one gentleman. Yes, I wanted to be clear on that. They do a phenomenal job, and they are working their tails off. So what we did was we started contractual dispatchers to help fill some of the voids until we get full-time people into the dispatch center. They were working ungodly hours, they were exhausted, they were burned out. We had a very long meeting one evening with the chief and lieutenant and I, and I can tell you that the looks in their eyes and the spirited conversations we had lent its hand to this now. Just to be clear, they all did agree to this. So they're getting paid, I believe, at like a time and a half rate to get them in here to help fill these voids. Again, until we get more people in, this is one of those things we're going to do to help them. And those ladies and gentlemen are extremely, extremely appreciative of this, to be able to have some of their downtime, to be with their children and their families, and all the good things that come along with that. So can't thank our dispatchers enough for the work they do. It's a tough job, especially with what's going on in the world right now. That moves into the next piece. We had a meeting tonight for lateral movements with our Civil Service Commission. We believe we've got everything worked out to where we can take lateral movements for police officers. In the past, we would normally get, what, 100, 60, 100 people to apply for civil service to become a police officer. In the last test, I believe, we have 14 of which, how many qualified?
There were 16 to 14.
Yeah. 16 people, 14 were actually qualified, and making it through that cut is very difficult, too. So the commission recognized, and by the way, there are some former officers that are on the Civil Service Commission that recognized the difficult position we're in in getting officers in. So there's a lot of pieces and parts that move with that, and if Mark wants to touch on that, but for the most part, it's essentially matching the pay that we have here. Well, they will not get an increase in pay over what we have, and more or less, if you're an eight-year officer in City X and you come over to here, you'll get the eight-year pay that our officers currently get. So the officers and everyone will be very appreciative of that, too. They'll give us the ability to have flexibility to get these folks in there, because we're having extreme difficulties getting police officers, too.
And I guess the only thing I would add is that that civil service rule allowing for lateral transfers has been on the books for as long as I can tell. I think it was in the initial rules, most likely, which has never been utilized as the mayor said, there hasn't been this level of need for it, so.
So to be clear again, the Civil Service Commission, the union, everyone recognizes the need here. We're all on board, the administrative staff. And the one caveat and catch that we added to it, because we looked at some other communities that were doing this, just to show that if there's ever a question of impropriety, that it will be interviewed by the chief, HR, and myself before they're hired to come over in a lateral movement. So there'll be three layers of people looking at this, too, just to ensure if there's ever that question, and we know how these things go in society. So there will always be more than one set of eyes on this to make sure that it's all open, legit, and what's best for us, so. Some good news, at 6:30 this evening, the mural has begun. The longtime project that has cost us a lot of time and energy is beginning to be painted tonight at 6:30. This should extend for the next seven days. They're going to work in off-hours, obviously, of traffic. There'll be maintenance of traffic, that we have a traffic control company out there that will be making sure that the kids from the high school that are helping with that and the mural artists are all out there and safe, and no one can come within their work zone. So we're making sure that's all legitimate for them and keeping those guys safe, because when that thing's done, I'm going to be very, we will all be very proud of that. I think it's a really neat thing that we partnered with our neighboring communities to add them into that mural to show that, you know, we are Nordonia, and we're all one unified front. Obviously, tonight showed a lot of that through our legislation. So they have little blurbs on there from other neighboring communities in Nordonia, and the focus is Macedonia, too, because it's in our community, so can't wait for that. Also did the state of the communities today, as you often asked me about. It was today that will be broadcast on Community Focus. They will be sending me a link that I will put to our website. I will put it on social media, I believe, as well, if I can. I think that's part of what they were doing. So we had all our neighbors there as well, and it was a nice afternoon to tell the people where we stand as a community. So thank you to Community Focus and the Chamber of Commons for putting that on. It's always a very nice thing. On a little bit of a sadder note, I want to recognize that some of our former officers have passed away. Ronnie Mix and Dale Kelly were two former officers with the Macedonia Police Department. They have unfortunately passed away, so I would ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And the last thing I kind of already did with the proclamation, but this is the 20-year anniversary of September 11. We all remember that day. I think most of us know, if we were old enough, where we were and what we were doing, and I ask that you keep those families that were affected by that in your thoughts and prayers as well. That concludes my report.[1726.78] I will go into committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry, timeout. I knew you were looking at me. Don't drive distracted, put the phones down and drive the car. You're supposed to check me on that.
Parks and Rec Committee had their meeting, their summer meeting last month. We got to meet the two new full-time staff members, Kelly and Sam. It was great to hear from them, and I'm very excited to have them on our team. They have great backgrounds, both of them. So they've, they're already hitting the ground running. Lots of programming coming up for the Parks and Rec Department. We talked about some of the great things coming up with the trails in the, in the park system. The, our group has always been very focused on trails and getting people, you know, to the parks and not necessarily focusing on the building. So that's very exciting to hear that that's coming up. We did decide that we weren't going to go forward with a survey at this time. There's just so many things going on with Parks and Rec and so many people that know what they're doing and doing the right stuff and know what is needed immediately, so we're just going to let them go with that. And our next meeting will be next Wednesday, the fifteenth, at six o'clock in the, at the rec center. We're going to do it downstairs again, Jason, and it'll be downstairs in the activity room. That's the end of my report.
I have an update for the Finance Committee. We were originally going to meet on September 30th. That date will still happen at 6:00 PM. We'll be meeting here. Public is welcome to watch. We were also going to meet on October 7th at 6:00 PM, and that has been changed to October 12th. Both meetings will be here and again, open to the public. And this will be to discuss the budget for 2022. And that's the end of my report.
Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll go into department reports, starting with Director Carles.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past month, our crews have been working diligently as the fall approaches to get to complete the reestablishment of stormwater swales throughout the city. The department has also completed asphalt repairs on two CWD repairs on North Bedford and on Blackfeet. The Service Department installed new mirrors, touchless faucets, touchless soap dispensers, touchless hand dryers at the park softball fields and at the park pavilion. That concludes my report. Thank you.
And we're moving right into leaf season, and I know that the mechanics were getting those prepared, and I know that's going to be a daunting task, as it always is. So just know that your leaves will be picked up, and they are getting ready for that. And I hate to say, summer's almost over, but dang it, it's almost over, so.
What's the first week of that, the first pass, in October or November?
It's in October.
Director Gilati.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to council for passage of resolutions 51, 52, and 53. The only other item to touch on is the parking lot at the rec center has been resurfaced, as some of you may have seen. New lines painted on the parking lot, and eight new additional handicap spaces have been created up close to the building, so that will help our residents and customers. End of report.
Thank you. Glad to have that done. Director Chad Ock.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to Mr. Gilati for helping us work through the project. It has been an eventful three weeks, I'll just say that. Needless to say, we have northeastern Ohio weather that played an impact. I would also like to thank our Service Department for all their help during maintenance week. We were able to get many of the rooms in the facility painted and get the family changing room completely reconditioned. That was a huge bonus for us, so it actually looks really nice in that room right now, and it's a lot more functional than it was previous. Our fall sports are in full swing, and we have soccer and football kicking off this Saturday. So it'll be really exciting for us to get everybody out to the parks. Thanks to our parks crew, the ballfields have been looking great all August and now into September. And we, again, just like the summer, we're packed. We have field usage going on every single night of the week. And now we will not only have the baseball, softball field usage, we will also have football and soccer going on with every single bit of open space we have. So if you are out in the parks, just know, many of our open park spaces are now lined for football and soccer. We just simply have so many teams, we had to figure out places to put them. So congratulations to the rec crew for doing such a good job of drawing up programs. We have great registration going on currently. We're doing really well in comparison to our colleagues throughout northeastern Ohio. And the big one, next Saturday, September 18th, 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM in Longwood Park, we will be hosting Fall Fest, so please come out. We have thirteen breweries coming in and six food trucks so far that are going to be joining us. Should be an exciting time, lots of opportunities to hang out. We will have a cornhole tournament as well. So if you wish to challenge us and play, come on out. We're happy to take on more competitors. And then the final piece is we have ordered AEDs for our parks. They are on extreme back orders, so we are still two months out in getting those delivered. We will have those in sometime early wintertime or late fall, and we will get those installed appropriately at that time. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Chief, your opinion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking council for passing the Sagamore contract. I'd like to thank the mayor and Director Gedetti for all their hard work on that contract. As I stated earlier, the only puzzle missing at that point is also the Sagamore Hills trustees. There was a lot of banter back and forth, and it's good for both communities, and it's very important to my staff for stability. And once again, I know I already said it, and I'll say it over again, it's because of my staff and the way they do their jobs is why we're being successful, so kudos to them. Speaking of my staff, October 6th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we're having our one-hundredth anniversary open house, and we're going to have food trucks here, demonstrations, there might be some people talking. Just to celebrate a hundred years, we're working on a video. The Assistant Chief has spent the last two days with Community Focus, and we're going to put together a video. We brought in a whole bunch of retired people that remember like the 50s and the 60s. So it was very exciting for me, and quit laughing, Jason. And I also got a phone call this week from Santa's Head Elf. Santa delivery's going to be back. Santa feels much better with the COVID situation, so there'll be some dates coming up for that. We have to firm that up with the North Pole, and we're very much looking forward to that. So, thank you.
What about Halloween? I've been asked a lot of questions about Halloween.
Unfortunately, due to Halloween, we are not going to host our party. We're looking, thinking of alternatives to bring all those people into the station right now. Could be a cold rainy night. They stand in line for costume delivery, and anybody who's ever been to that party knows the big hit is what? The fire truck rides, and we put ten or twelve kids in the back of a truck. We're just not comfortable doing that right now. So working on alternatives, don't know what it's going to look like, but it'll be, guarantee you, won't look like our usual Halloween party. So we're going to see if we can do something for the kids.
And trick or treat is on October 31st from six to, do we do nine, is it?
No, I think it's eight.
Eight. I was trying to give the kids an extra hour.
No.
But we will always have it on Halloween, which is October 31st, so before the talks of, oh, there's a football game, it's a Sunday, it's Tuesday, my kid plays soccer. We get these questions every year, and I'm not being disrespectful to those people that want to change it, but I am saying to be consistent, as I think for many, many years we've done this, it's on October 31st from six to eight, so that is the plan.
Correct.
So it'll be on Sunday in the evening, and I don't think the Browns play late that day, so that should work out well for everyone.
Chief, what time is that open house?
6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And it is a Wednesday.
On October 6th, okay.
Yep.
Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the passing of the contract for dispatch, and I want to thank the family for the donation. We're going to install two new cameras with those. That will give us eight. And just as a note, yesterday, we had a vehicle come through, had a warrant on it for robbery out of, I believe it was Ravenna, with the cameras. We found the vehicle, stopped, made the arrest. So they are working, they're doing a fantastic job, and we really appreciate the donation.
So those, I'm sorry.
There was a good article in the News Leader about the cameras, very thorough explanation of how they work again. So if you didn't get, there were two articles, I think, in the Nordonia Hills News, and now there's another one in the News Leader about it. So if you need more information, it's out there.
Yeah, I talked to Eric several times, if it was his article you're referring to.
Yeah, the front page of the, this week's News Leader.
Now, what a great deterrent. Does it, people know we have that, and you're a criminal out of our area?
We'll get out.
Yeah, there was a good quote from you in there, and you mentioned that people are driving stolen vehicles to commit crimes. So if they know, don't come through Macedonia with a stolen vehicle, they're not going to even have an opportunity to commit a crime here.
Yeah, they're not coming down here. We don't have chop shops down here. They're coming down here to do more crimes, and we're getting them out. So it is helping.
It's also been in Beacon Journal, because the Beacon talked about that there's only two communities, and we're it, along with our partner.
Yeah, but you're going to see these everywhere. I mean, they're so successful, they're going to pop up everywhere. It's a wonderful system.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to HR's daily operations, we are finalizing our drugstore workplace training. Our deadline for completion is 9/17. I want to thank Kyle Collins for all of his hard work, because without him, I could not have completed this online training. He did a magnificent job. We also have improved our BWC claims experience rating by 10% over last year, over 2020, and this is, this directly affects our premiums. So we are going the right direction, and we plan on continuing to do so. And that's the end of my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Hi. Hi, audience. The IT department has added some hybrid displays for council meetings, reran some stuff. I've been tweaking your guys' audio over the course of this meeting, so hopefully you guys will be a little clearer and a little louder. Also completed putting in the firewalls at the two fire departments, so that brought them online, as well as selected a vendor to go forward with the website. End of report. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Gedetti.
I have no report, sir.
Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I have two things for a quick one. Mayor mentioning Community Focus, there also will be a taping of today's per-city council. It's optional, so you can't say who's going to be there or not. And then that will be posted out online, and I don't even know how to get Community Focus anymore.
I think their website's mycommunityfocus.com. You can find the full videos there.
If you have an app, you can stream it on Roku.
Mayor, would you like to mention for?
Second of all, you probably don't understand that Councilor Ventura is not here again tonight. He and I spoke today, and he's authorized me to let you know that, yes, he had to have some heart surgery. It's been two weeks. He's healing, he's feeling pretty good, but he knew that this might be a little extreme to come tonight and sit here for as long as that we do. But he cares about the city. He's still reading all the information, asking the appropriate questions, even though he's not here. We hope to see him again, and keep him in your purse. It'll be our next meeting. Thank you.
I just want to mention there is a 9/11 vigil at the Northfield VFW post. That'll be at 7:40 on Saturday.
Mayor, just, Ms. Tully, the Community Focus was at the State of the Communities today, and they have a new app out now. So that's another way where you can get the Community Focus, so.
Correct.
It's awesome to learn how to spell that, but.
And one other, two other small things before we go. Thank you, Councilor Tully, for pointing out the Akron Beacon Journal. I don't read the paper much anymore because I'm more digital, but they did point out in one of their articles that the city of Macedonia had the greatest growth over the past decade of any city in some county at 8.8%. So that's pretty impressive, good news to read, and I thank you for providing me that article, because I was not aware of that until I read that. And last, front page news.
If it's due to, they'll say, well, how did you know? That's the census. It's all this census data is now being calculated and accumulated, and that's all the information that's sent out to them for someone. Wow, look at us.
Awesome stuff. Last but not least, go Knights, Nordonia football, 3-0, so let's keep that rolling.
I thought you were going to say, don't drive distracted.
I already got that part.
You said it again.
To, the speed limit on E2 is not 4550. That includes cars, trucks, semis, and that red light means stop. I almost got hit by a semi. I just, amazes me that no one's paying attention to the lights.